October 1st, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Due to a change in the agenda, we will have the minutes for August, September, and October at the next meeting to approve. So with that in mind, our first item on the agenda is ZC 1808, a rezoning request at 814 North Greeno Road.
And thank you Chairman, and Plan Commission members. And so we have a zoning change to lead off tonight, and this is properties on North Greeno Road. You'll see the zoning map and the basic property information there on this slide right here. This is of course approximately 4 miles south of State Highway 104 on North Greeno. And this is one single lot. The request, of course, is the one single lot of both empty makers. The request for this zoning change is for a R1 low density single family, and it is going to change it to B2 business district. And you see the basic information of the...
Remaining information right there, thank you.
I was just gonna ask him if it's that.
Very good. Thought the light was on, it is not.
It's on the side one of it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we'll continue on 814 North Greeno zoning change. And we'll lead off, and Plan Commissioners, I've tried to synthesize your staff report into the slides, so I certainly won't read every word off the slides. I tried to have information that we can refer back to as needed to answer questions, and certainly stop me if on a particular slide, if I'm going a little too fast. When we look through the criteria to examine a zoning change, one of the first things that we examine is the comprehensive plan guidance. And in this case, you have a piece of property that's lying between two village centers, and the comprehensive plan didn't necessarily give guidance on the area connecting two village centers. So what we defer to in that case, we'll look at some of the surrounding properties. And there's the Hyatt PUD and the Park Place PUDs, north and south respectively of the subject property. And so we'll go through this very briefly. This is the site plan that was included with the Hyatt PUD when it was approved. This is supporting document included with that PUD. And the basic data right there is in your packet as well as on this slide. We'll go through this very, very quickly, but there are a variety of approved uses that were approved with that PUD. And south of subject property, there is the Park Place on Greeno. Again, here is a sample of the site plan, the parcel information there on your slide. Very similar uses for that particular PUD, and we'll use this to compare to the subject property here in just a moment. The approved uses for that piece of property continued. And so using, with that in mind, and also considering the character of the surrounding properties, which is another criteria of the zoning change, of course, to the east of the property is the Auburn University Gulf Coast Experiment Station. We noted in there that it's very unlikely that we'll see any type of residential or commercial development in the future. Also, west of subject property, on the west side of Greeno is, of course, the Valena Park slash City of Fairhope Recreation Center. Again, we note this because both of those uses have activities that can periodically produce noise, traffic in the case of Valena Park. So the conclusions we have at the bottom of that slide, the existing uses and emerging development pattern created by those two nearby PUDs, along with the proximity of the experiment station and the recreation center. That's inherently commercial in nature, and so the statement here into which introduction of a B2 zoning district would not be inappropriate. The other criteria, and we'll go through this fairly quickly, but when we look at a zoning change, the other criteria of the zoning ordinance, you see there C1 E4 through E7. And we note in there the various requirements of the site, that there's no hydroic soils were found. Certainly, the infrastructure is there to support the site if it is zoned to a business classification. This slide right here, it talks about and explains the uses in a B2 zoning compared to the PUDs north and south of it. We note in here that some, many of the uses that are not by right in B2 would require approval by the Board of Adjustments in some cases. And we note that because that means there would be some additional vetting required for some of those B2-type uses. We also note here that in the two PUDs into their PUD ordinances, there were restrictions for prohibiting drive-through restaurants. So one of the conditions of approval and requests that we'll have of the Plan Commission in this meeting is apply the same restriction to any, if should any drive-through restaurants, should any restaurants occur on this piece of property, Zone B2, that we would have as a condition of approval restricting a drive-through restaurant. The applicant included a conceptual site plan. This need not be built. This is just a conceptual plan of a potential future development on the site. One of the things we evaluate also in a zoning change is traffic impact. So in this case, we note here that we encourage the developer to contact both our Public Works Director as well as Aldott for any traffic impacts should the time that this property be developed commercially. And because this is not a residential-type development, the compatibility analysis that we normally see when we're introducing a higher-density type of use into an area, it's not necessarily applicable here, so we won't get carried away describing it in this case. But I do show the buffer for your reference, so that way you see the quarter-mile buffer around the subject property. The subject property is shown in the center right there in a crosshatch. So bringing us to a staff recommendation that staff recommends approval of case number ZC 18.08, which is the rezoning from R1 low-density single-family residential to B2 general business district. The PPIN shown there, and that's of course 814 North Greeno Road. And like we mentioned earlier, the restaurant drive-through lanes and windows are prohibited on that piece of property is a condition of approval that we're requesting. And Plan Commission members, very likely, when we get to the city council stage, that would probably, that would almost certainly become an ordinance to have that restriction. But for, for the purposes of this meeting, it's just a request for a condition of approval. The applicant's engineer that helped prepare the application is with us today, Mr. Larry Smith. And in addition to any questions for the engineer, I'm happy to answer questions from the Plan Commission.
Does anybody have a question for the staff before the engineer speaks on behalf of the applicant?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Buford, you've mentioned that we've precluded the use of drive-in windows for restaurants. Is it not true that we've precluded the use of drive-in windows of any sorts in those PUDs?
No, Plan Commission members, the PUDs are a standalone ordinance for each PUD, and so I won't, I won't try to confess to knowing the history on every single PUD. But since a PUD is a standalone ordinance, it is possible that quite a number could be restricted, but I don't know off the top of my head how many or which ones...
Check that out just for the sake of this board. I believe that, I believe that no drive-through windows of any type are allowed on those PUDs that are adjacent.
I can answer for...
Can you answer, Mr. Smith?
I've got one question.
Is that even considered banks?
I think it considered banks. The concern was the traffic, you know, entering and exiting off of Greeno Road and constantly, and it was thought that if people go in and stay for a while, it wouldn't be a constant ingress egress there. I think that was the wisdom.
And Mr. Chairman, and the Council President made a very good point. I wanted to illuminate something here I might have brushed over. The PUDs in their current form, the Hyatt and the Park Place PUDs, they do restrict drive-through restaurants, but they do allow drive-through windows for banks, but they restrict the number of lanes. And I believe they restrict it to two lanes per PUD. So they allow it for banks, but not for a drive-through restaurant.
For these particular PUDs?
Yes, sir. For these, for these particular PUDs north and south of this property.
Buford, the, we had a couple of items come up on Greeno, and I remember we brought the, some, some restrictions that we were putting just specifically on the Greeno Road. You know, we concerned, everybody says, you know, number one, we don't want to have that strip compete with the downtown area on a size-wise, and the main thing people say is they don't want it to look like Airport Boulevard to Mobile or Hamburger Alley and Daphne. And we all came up with those changes to the Greeno Road kind of an overlay district. Has that been passed? Does that have to go to city council? And so has it been passed, and is that in effect?
No, it hasn't. We had talked about that, but then we moved forward with a visual preference survey, which is going to focus on Greeno Road and other parts of the city. And so we have held that until after the, that comes about. A visual preference survey will be, I think, I think it's November the 8th, or in that timeframe, November 8th, where we'll have, we're having someone come in and do this visual preference survey, which is basically a method of, of people expressing what they want to see on Greeno Road, what they want Greeno Road to look like. We hear many, many times that we don't want to look like Airport Boulevard or whatever it is, but we don't, they don't tell us what they want to see. And so what, what we did is sort of held things until that visual preference survey is completed, we get the results back of that, and that will help us move forward with any regulations or any kind of tailored standards for Greeno Road in particular. I do want to mention one thing, and Buford mentioned this too. He had a image of the comprehensive plan, and we had, you know, this is sort of between two village centers. I do want to point out that in our zoning ordinance, we do have regulations that are specific for those village centers, the CVC, Community Village Center District, and others that support those village centers. The B2 is sort of a, a general commercial, and we struggled with Greeno Road for, you know, quite a while about how to handle these. But in this particular case, this property does sit between two PUDs. The size of the subject property is below the threshold required for a PUD, and so we feel like this is probably the best route to go for this particular piece of property. And that's where the recognition came from. I just want to make sure that people are aware that with these village centers, there are specific zoning districts that are tied to those village centers that we recommend.
Given that we have three PUDs in a row right here, would there be, and I think an overlay district probably couldn't go now because they've already initiated some action, but is there any chance of friendly persuasion, bringing in the three putters, to use whatever word is appropriate, and discussing maybe how there would be a commonality of entrance, exit, or connectivity? Because what we've got is three little blocks right along there, and I, I don't like the idea of three little blocks actually on Greeno Road like that. That's gonna, you're gonna have the mortality rate, it's not gonna be very friendly.
That's something we can certainly recommend. As you know, these came at different stages, so it's almost, it's very difficult to, you know, when they come in different years, it's hard to make those kind of work together. I would anticipate that as we move forward with the visual preference survey, that the data we get back on that will probably look at creating some sort of overlay or some sort of special district for Greeno Road. That's, that's the main interest into the city, it's very important.
I personally would like to vote everything down until that comes.
Right.
And I mean, my, unless it's a PUD, because if it's a PUD, or if they're willing to, on their own, say, we'll put, I mean, I can tell you what people want to see on Greeno. They want to see faces of buildings, they want to see plants. What they don't want to see is parking lots, drive-throughs, and I mean, you can look at Airport Boulevard and see what makes it look like, you know, crap. And it's basically, you know, nude parking lots, drive-throughs, buildings plopped out, and you're looking at the back of all the buildings, and garbage cans and dumpsters and everything up and down. And people want to see the faces of attractive buildings, and they want to see plants. And that's what y'all did in your overlay, and I'd love to see the overlay pass, and then we could change it always. But, you know, once you let the genie out of the bottle, you can't put it back in. And that's my concern, and, and, you know, Greeno Road and every, every time we've gotten together in these town hall meetings, you know, number one, keep, you know, downtown Fairhope, downtown Fairhope, because that's, you know, that's what makes Fairhope, Fairhope is that central business district and protect it. And number two is keep Greeno Road from looking like Hamburger Alley. And if we just, you know, approve it B2 and assume that, you know, the person who buys it and the person who buys it from them, and 30 years from now, the person that buys it from them is going to make it look attractive without any kind of an overlay or special requirements. I mean, if you're on Greeno Road and you've got all that traffic, what you want is visibility. You want people seeing your building, you want to clear out as much as you can, have as big of a sign out there, have, you know, you want to push that envelope. I do. If it's my property, I want to. If it's somebody else's property, I don't want them to, but you know, but if it's mine, that's the first thing I'm gonna do, and I'm a hypocrite just like everybody else. So, you know, my concern if it, you know, can't join one of these PUDs is, you know, let's do the overlay and bring it back, or maybe they can volunteer to add, you know, the restrictions that, you know, were in the overlay district that you all, you know, I thought did a great job on, and I was very excited about that when we passed it.
And of course, that's the Plan Commission's prerogative as far as what to do with this application. And I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, you're right. I mean, all the things that you talk about, I think we've heard that before. I think the visual preference survey goes into a little more detail, and would, I think would really help us formulate these plans that may be, that the citizens would like to see, and that the Plan Commission would like to see, and the city council would like to see.
Well, let's do it. I mean, I've been on this thing for 18 years now, and we don't have it in 18 years.
Well, and I would highly encourage you to participate in that visual preference survey. It's, it's a pretty neat tool, where you, where you look at a series of images, instead of trying to verbally say what we're gonna do there, they show you a series of images. And you can look at those images and say, I like it, I don't like it, or I like this. And those images mean something when it, when it comes to the form and type of buildings we want to see there. You know, now, should all of Greeno Road be, you know, it's, certain areas should probably have a little more shop frontage or, or street frontage than others. I mean, near the main intersections like at Farough Avenue and Greeno, obviously, that's sort of a center there, and so you, you would tend to see more intense development at those intersections, and then as you spread back towards the north and the south, you don't, the building frontages are not as, as visible. But, but just to reiterate, you know, staff is here to serve the Plan Commission, city council, and the citizens, and whatever the Plan Commission finds acceptable, we'll certainly go with and won't argue with that whatsoever, because we want to, Greeno Road is a very important corridor into the city, and how we handle that will have future ramifications in the, as far as, as far as development and the appearance of Fairhope.
When is the survey be completed?
It's November 8th, and I would anticipate probably a couple months after that, we will get the results from that. Now, after that, you know, how, what we draft will be, will be, may take a little bit longer, just depends on, you know, how we want to move forward. May want to see a committee appointed to look at those and implement changes. We do have a comprehensive planning process in the future coming up. I'm not sure how long, that's probably further off from the distance. I don't know if we want to wait that long to do something here, but I do think that the visual preference survey will give us a good kickoff starting, starting point for Greeno Road and how we want to move forward with that.
Well, then what would your recommendation be for an issue like we've got in front of us tonight?
Well, tonight, we have an application in front of us. I think we feel like with the limitation of the drive-through, that's something that we found acceptable. Obviously, if the Planning Commission would choose to wait, you know, until this visual preference survey is completed, I mean, we would not have any objection to that at all.
You're talking about months down the road now?
Well, yes. I mean, the, the surveys on, on November the 8th, and then getting the results back, I'm estimating probably 60 days to get the results back, get the report back from that. And then after that, we would need to sit down and start looking at regulations that may be acceptable, and then going through that process to have that adopted. So you're probably talking about six or seven, eight months down the road to get that done.
All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. Larry?
Larry Smith, civil engineer on the project, and I hear all the concerns. I understand all the concerns. What we did with the concept site plan is we tried to mimic what was already, as much as we could, approved on the PUD. I understand your concerns. This is a concept site plan, it's not a PUD. We are willing to add into the restrictions if it's agreeable with the staff, that parking would be required to be in the rear of the building on the concept plan that we provided. We only had two parking spaces up front anyway, and that was really just kind of mimicking what was done on the, the PUD immediately to our south. But those aren't a necessity. If we are going to be putting conditions on this zoning anyway, we'd be, we'd be agreeable to that, because waiting six to eight months to get all this in place doesn't necessarily work well with our timetable. So if that's one of the main concerns, is the parking and having the, having the buildings pushed up and the parking in the back, we're agreeable to add in that condition.
That would get my vote, and I'm not speaking for anybody else, but I'm just saying, because that was the main thing in the overlay, that our concern was if you do that in the landscaping, then that, to me, that's basically everything that the people are concerned about. It's just that visual off of Greeno while people drive by.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for me? I'd be glad to answer.
Any other self-imposed restrictions you're willing to put up on your, that property? B2 is pretty broad. I'm, I'm still concerned with it.
I would have to know where the concerns lie, and have to consult with my client. I can't...
Gas stations, auto repair shops, things like that.
Well, when we talk about drive-throughs, I'm thinking of Walgreens and pharmacies and things like that. I don't know if those tie into the other drive-throughs that we've been discussing. They didn't, they weren't on the form.
Currently, they, that's not, by the one condition that's on there, that would not be restricted. But I'd, again, I can't speak for what my, I'd have to confer with my client for a few minutes and look at the zoning and figure out which, what y'all would like to knock off the list and see if she'd be agreeable to that. I know what, the conversations we've had has all been about office mainly, but I just need some time and know what, where your concerns are. I hear gas station and whatever, Mr., what else did you say, Mr. Burrell?
I said auto repair shops, gas stations, convenience stores, all those. I just, I just, it may sound negative, but I just, I can't see it happening there. I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a mistake.
Hey, while y'all talk, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this point. This is a public hearing. By the way, for those of you in the public, I don't have any names listed, but if you'd like to speak, you just need to come up, state your name and your address for Emily for the record. And just an FYI, this is a zoning change, so the Planning and Zoning Commission does not have any authority here. We simply make a recommendation to the city council. So Jack will see this two times. Sometimes the, Jack Mayor may not choose to abstain from this vote, because he'll have another vote at this, at city council. So sometimes the city council members on zoning changes just to soon not vote here to keep their mind open for the next, you know, for the next round that they'll see it. This will be the only time that we, the Planning and Zoning Commission will see it, and will make a recommendation to the city council, and then they'll make the decision, because this is a zoning which becomes an ordinance. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this rezoning on Greeno Road? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Wayne, do y'all have a, do you have a list of the B2 uses? And going, going down the line right here, automobile, service centers, convenience stores, and outdoor sales lots, which to me would mean an automobile, used auto place, or a place where you can sell boats and trailers and, and everything else, and it just, that wouldn't be appropriate there either. Yes, nan?
On page four. They're listed on page four of your packet.
And there are some uses that are allowed on appeal to the Board of Adjustments. Some are by right, some are on appeal, and I have it on my phone, so let me look through it real quick.
On page four?
Are they? Okay.
Oh, I see.
Third paragraph, you need to tell them. Is allowed uses for B2, allowed by right, and then permitted subject to special conditions, and then permitted only on appeal.
And just for the record, I'll, I'll read the ones that are allowed by rights, everybody's clear. Allowed by right in B2 is single-family, two-family, mixed-use, elementary, secondary schools, educational facility, library, public or common open space, general or professional office, grocery retail, general merchandise, shopping center, general personal service, auto repair, indoor recreation, boarding house or dormitory, restaurant, bar, and entertainment venue. And then permitted subject to special conditions, listed in the ordinance, are townhouses, accessory dwelling, home occupation, convenience store, and recreational vehicle park. Permitted only on appeal and subject to special conditions is a cemetery, hospital, community center, club, public utility, auto service station, outdoor sales limited, outdoor sales lot, garden center, convalescent or nursing home, clinic, outdoor recreational facility, daycare, mortuary, or funeral home, dry cleaner or laundry, personal storage, hotel or motel, kennel, or animal hospital, and limited manufacturing. That's all allowed on appeal to the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you.
It sounds like the one that, that probably draws the most attention is Councilman Burrell pointed out was, is the auto repair store. That was probably the one with the most, might be the most noxious type use.
And the only comment I have, and I may be wrong, but I'm gonna be consistently wrong, because when they did the PUD just south of there, I just feel like the rec center is an asset for more residential and maybe high-density residential, but I just think there's an opportunity there that shares a resource that we have with the city and, and promotes that use with people that are, you know, can get there through pedestrian-type accesses. And that's just my opinion.
As far as Mr. Burrell's comment, my client is willing to strike the ability to have automobile repair on there, I believe. I'm guessing allowed by right are the main concerns, because everything else were coming back before y'all, or some Board of Adjustments to get approval for that. And so she is willing to have that condition put into the, on the property as well. And so, um, she is willing to have that condition put into the, on the property as well.
Any further questions for the applicant or staff?
I do want to make one clarification. I did find that, um, in this package, see if I can find the page again. Just showed it to Buford. It does state that drive-throughs for banks are specifically prohibited. I, I'm pretty sure that we had, we had eliminated all drive-throughs, period. It, it was very general in terms. Uh, it's on page eight at the top. Says Article C1, E3 above, and Jason approves uses immediately north and south of subject property or commercial in nature and allow both retail and restaurant uses, but restrict drive-through services to banks which have typical daytime operating hours. So what, what we did there was we restricted all drive-throughs.
Okay.
Uh, the, um, and I want to say to the, um, engineer and the property owner too that I, I don't think it should remain R1. That's, that's for sure. I, I sympathize with you there for certain.
I may be reading wrong, but it reads to me like we restricted everything but banks. The only thing that you have, that you allow drive in, that everything is restricted except banks, which would allow drive.
But restrict drive-through, yeah, you can allow banks, but you can't have drive-through there.
And what about a pharmacy?
No drive-through windows. It's, I'm pretty sure it was no drive-throughs, period. Richard, Richard, you read that to, you read that to say that it accepts banks?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's.
I don't see, I don't see it.
That's correct. We, we have drive-throughs for banks and we have.
Well, if it wasn't.
And I'm, I'm speaking for Park Place, because I did that PUD. We, we allow bank drive-throughs and pharmacies with up to two drive-throughs, is the way we wrote that one.
But it restricts the drive-through services to banks. It, it, that means you can't have a fast food restaurant drive-through. You can't have a, any other kind of drive-through that's not a bank. That's the way I read it.
Yeah.
Now, communication is very difficult. And I have a hard time with it a lot of times. But this is the way I read it.
All right. I provoke.
If somebody makes a motion, I would support it if it restricts drive-throughs of any type auto repair and requires parking in the rear. I would support a, a motion if it requires those items. Otherwise, I would probably vote against it until.
Is your public hearing closed now?
No, I.
Yes.
Yes, the public hearing is closed. And I'm just saying what my support, you know, my vote would be, yes.
I, I just, since you just changed the wording on the condition on the drive-throughs, I just wanted to say my client was fine with that too. Drive-throughs of any type.
Um, and I'm just saying what I would, you know, just, because, you know, I like to see those in the motion if we do approve it since.
Go ahead. I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Uh, case number ZC 18 dash, I mean, point 08, 814 North, North Greeno Road, that we would make a recommendation to the county, I mean, the city, uh, council to approve this zoning change, uh, to B2 and restrict all drive-throughs for any building and to, uh, uh, move the, move the buildings further out, parking in the rear.
I'll second that motion. And what about the auto repair?
And no auto repair.
I'll second that. We have a motion to approve, subject to no drive-through, parking in the rear, and no auto repair. Any further discussion?
The gas station was a special, had, you'd had to get special approval. It wasn't one of them automatically.
Yes, sir, that's correct. That would require Board of Adjustment approval.
And also, it mentioned RV parks, but that requires three acres, so that's not an option either.
Yeah, a lot of these items, like I don't think a, a drugstore, I think would be probably a little, lots a little too small for that, probably, I would assume. I don't know. But anyway, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion passes two, four, six, seven to one. Emily? All right, next item on the agenda, Z, uh, SD 18. And by the way, that motion is just a recommendation to the city council, so, uh, the city council will ultimately have a vote based on this. Uh, next item, SD 18.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Wayne, is there, you had mentioned that we could maybe start a forum to proceed these, the, this survey along a little faster? Is there, I know that it was about a year ago that we came up with a lot of these ideas that we wanted to implement, and now it's catching up with us.
Right.
How can we kind of move this along quicker?
Well, I, I, I think that the visual preference survey, doing that first, I think that's warranted, and I think that will give us, uh, more data and a little more, um, information to go by as far as developing regulations. Um, once that occurs, once we get that, that feedback, we'll certainly present that. And then I, it may be something where we might want to appoint a committee together to, uh, work on these and, um, have that brought forward as quickly as we can. I know that's very important. Um, but I, we don't want to, I, I think we want to be very careful doing this, because this has implications that could be, you know, have lasting impacts. But, uh, not trying to delay it, but I think having, having a group look at it and go over it. Staff can, can present things all day long, but I think it's important to have, uh, planning commission involved, city council involved, before we bring something forward that, uh, that, uh, will be, uh, hopefully adopted.
Well, I think this is going to set precedence, because this is the gateway to Fairhope. And if we do this right, maybe we can do all the other areas as well that are going to be proceeding in this direction.
Right.
And so I just, I know that there's a, an urgency.
Sure.
Because it's not, it's not slowing down, and we need to.
Right.
Play catch-up now. Um, so, you know, I, what I can do to help, to help you.
Okay.
Appoint that board.
Sure.
You know, I, I'd love to help.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that. I think a big, you know, with Green Road, the landscaping and the trees and all of there, uh, really add value to that. So I think we've got a good step in that right direction by requiring landscaping and, and all the trees that are in the right-of-way is, is, is a good step in that direction. I think with, what we'll do is kind of enhance on that as we follow up with the visual preference survey. Uh, but we'll certainly try to get, uh, the planning commission and others involved as we move, to move that process forward. And I know there's been, I've heard about these committees that have been, had before. Uh, I think our goal would be to bring something, uh, time, have a certain timeframe in order to get that, those recommendations completed resulting from the visual preference survey and have that come forward as quickly as we can.
Do we know what time and place, November 8th, this is happening?
Yeah, the time and place, Emily? Um, well, it's going to be at the library and here. But we'll be glad, we're going to do a press release and have some other information on, you know, media, uh, release on that. So we'll certainly get that to you. Uh, but we're, we're doing one at the library and then one here. I think the one here will be in the evening, one in the library will be, uh, middle of the day. So trying to reach both groups. Uh, and then also, I, I think it's going to have an online survey as well. So, um, if you could go online, it's just a matter of, you know, you picking which ones you find acceptable or not. So, uh, but there'll be, there'll be plenty of opportunity to reach out to the, to the public to get feedback.
We'll also be using the Everbridge system to send it out as well.
Okay.
And we'll have another planning commission meeting before that, so it'll be announced at it as well.
And, and the visual preference survey, um, the, the city council sponsored this. They funded this, but also we got a grant from the Realtors Association, a small grant from them to do this as well. So it's kind of a joint effort between the city and the Realtors Association, which I thought was a good, good step in that, in that right direction as well.
Yeah, and if I can help advertise that, I'll, I'll do my best.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, SD 1832. This is Pine Wood subdivision, um, off of Manly Road, near the, uh, City Fair, Fairhope Soccer Complex. This is, uh, an item that we've seen before, and with our new changes, that you don't have to wait six months anymore, we're seeing it again.
And thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. And, uh, as the Chairman said, this is Pine Wood Phase Two. If you'll look on the, this is the zoning map of the area, and you see the subject property. Uh, currently, the subject property as well as the six lots associated with the initial Pine Wood subdivision are unzoned. There is a zoning cha, there is an annexation slash zoning change pending, um, for future consideration by the city council. And the site details, and you see the basic site information right there. What I'd point out here is this is requesting 18 lots on 7.42 acres. And you see the aerial image right here, uh, with the various information related to the case. And, uh, we note, you'll see right there, the zoning change case that's pending. So some basics, uh, some historical information. What we wanted to, uh, call to everyone's attention, of course, is that the previous Pine Wood case, you see the case number there on your screen. And then that case, uh, had its final, you see both its preliminary and final plat approvals. And then, at that time, annexation and zoning establish, with establishment was not requested. So those initial lots at the top of the phase, at the top of the drawing right there, uh, remain unzoned Baldwin County. So those are 15,000 square foot, 100-foot wide lots. So Lot 7 created by that subdivision is what you see in the pale yellow color on the right. So this case is technically a re-subdivision of Lot 7 of Pine Wood, uh, Pine Wood subdivision. Um, it functions very much like a phase, so it's, so it's certainly appropriate and understandable to describe it as a phase and name it as a phase. So we'll talk about the case before you today. And the drawing you see before you hear, what we did here is color-coded all of the lots in a very light yellow color. And then all of the common areas that contain green space are shown in a very light green to contrast that from the existing lots, the proposed lots. And then you see the, uh, you see the street going, uh, going through the area right there. Uh, so all lots in this requested subdivision are at least 10,500 square feet and are at least 75 feet wide. And the largest lot being just over, just over 12,000 square feet. What we'd like to point out and call to the planning commissions and the public's attention here is the left, the drawing on the left, the drawing excerpt on the left, was the original pedestrian easements shown on the, the previous case that was denied in May, the case number 18 dot 18. If you look at the drawing on the right, and again, we've shaded it in a light yellow, the current case, particularly between Lot 16 and 17, that area has been widened considerably. Uh, it was previously a pedestrian easement that basically straddled a lot line. Now, that is actually, that is now actually common area and is actually green space. And you see some of the details on the verbiage on the left right there. We'll talk about the sidewalks traversing this area on a future slide. We just wanted to call out that this is one change made to the current application as opposed to the previous application. So that large area between Lot 16 and 17 is 30 feet wide and 150 feet long. This drawing right here, what we wanted to show here and, uh, the, uh, note here, the sidewalks, and I apologize, it's a bit small in the slide. You have an 11 by 17 drawing in your packet. You'll notice the sidewalks traversing through the site, and especially on the southern, you know, the southern area, the southern area, common area and, uh, green space, you'll notice how it connects the right-of-way, passes through the common area slash green space, goes around the detention area, and then reconnects to the right-of-way in the southeast corner of the property. And you have a similar connection. It's not as easily seen on this drawing, but you'll note it to the north right there. Uh, one thing we wanted to point out here is that the developer gave us some additional correspondence, and he verified via correspondence the, all the sidewalks in the common areas and in the pedestrian easements will be constructed at the time the other infrastructure is installed on these, uh, on this subdivision. Uh, he also noted, and in his, in the same correspondence, that their intention is to restrict the fencing height in these area near the green spaces. And what that does is it improves casual surveillance of the area, uh, for passersby. And so some additional notes right here, and again, apologize for the small size, but, um, to comply with the landscaping ordinance, because this, you know, if this, if this is successful, this will eventually be, uh, zoned, uh, there's some additional screening placed around the, uh, around the detention areas. So some of the trees and some of the sidewalks are removed in this view to show and explain the shrubbery. We just want to make it very clear that the sidewalks are depicted on this drawing, that this is representative of the shrubbery. So, uh, there was some confusion. I had some questions on that. I wanted to illuminate that here. Talk again about, and just briefly summarize the amounts of common areas and green space. So on your north common area, you see the breakdown right there. Uh, and you'll notice that you have just over a half acre of detention in a, uh, just about forty, uh, four tenths of an acre in green space. And then the southern common area right there, you have point eight seven acres of green space. Uh, what that, the, what that amounts to, and you'll see in one of the concluding remarks, is that, that, that translates into about 17% green space for the development total. Of course, the requirement is still 10%. Uh, planning commissioners, committee, planning commission members, we won't go into great detail about the next couple of slides unless we need to have the engineer answer some questions. But what we're going to talk about is drainage. And what we just wanted to, this is synthesized from your, from your staff report, just to understand that the drainage basins were modeled by the engineer of record. Both the pre-development drain, both the pre-development flows are modeled. These are the post-development flows of stormwater have been modeled. And what this chart here basically summarizes is that the requirements of the storm, the stormwater requirements of the subdivision regulations are that stormwater flows post-development must be equal to or less than pre-development. And the chart there, both pre and post, you see the comparisons to demonstrate that. A couple of very, very brief notes here. The, as we said, the post-development flows are equal to or less than the pre. Uh, the drainage basins flowing through Saddlewood are reduced from three presently to one post-development, um, because of the, uh, the engineering they've done on the site. And then what I'll also emphasize, and what we emphasize on previous applications, is that the entire 7.4 acres has been modeled, your entire drainage region has been modeled. What we'll talk about here is, um, in this, in the case of this case, it was submitted prior to the resolution that removed the hard number of 10 LID techniques from the subdivision regulations. However, this was submitted, uh, before then. So similar to prior cases, there is a request for waiver of the 10 LID techniques, and the request is to accept four LID techniques, but those four techniques occur in six locations. And so there is, like we've seen before on other cases, there is a waiver. The chart in the lower right-hand corner explains the different LID techniques they're using. Different techniques are used in different places. The next couple of slides here, we can use this to answer questions, so I won't read it in great detail. But this lists each one in detail and explains what they do and how they function. And what we wanted to show here is this is pulled from the subdivision regulations to show the types that they're using that remove 80% total suspended solids as required by the stormwater regulations. And so just, we'll, we'll have some review conclusions. These are our concluding remarks about this. So the green space exceeds the 10% requirement of the subdivision regulations. Uh, it was 13% in the last case. As you saw, they distinguished, they did a better job of distinguishing the green space from the common areas. Uh, we talked about the drainage system, covering the various requirements of Section F of Article 5 of the subdivision regulations. We noted the LID waiver. Something else we'd like to illuminate for the planning commission members, Silage Drive has been requested to be renamed to Dutch Road, uh, to avoid confusion with the nearby Silo Drive. Um, and there is a subdivision regulation governing that, so they've requested that. Also, we'll make note of the traffic study. Uh, the engineer of records, traffic consultant, provided correspondence, um, in this application, indicating a traffic study is not warranted for the development due to the low, should grow, low trip generation expected to be generated by the development. So a traffic study was not applicable in this case. So the staff recommendation is approval of case number SD 18 point 32, contention upon two conditions. Uh, one is, of course, is final approval by the city council of the zoning change, uh, case number ZC 18 point 05, that we talked about earlier. And then, as we mentioned prior, the acceptance of the applicant's request of waiver of six LID techniques from the 10 required of the requirements of the subdivision regulations at the time the application was submitted. Uh, we would have a, a different recommendation had this been prior, had been submitted, uh, after that. So the, the applicant submitted this application, um, but asked that we hold it over until this meeting is why we're, uh, in dealing with this request waiver. So, the planning commission, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, the engineer of record and the surveyor of record with Sawgrass Consulting are here, are here today on behalf of the, uh, on behalf of the developer. But before we turn it over to them, I'm happy to answer questions.
I've, I've got a question, Buford. In May, we heard, uh, the zoning case 18 oh five. That's been over four months now. Why, has that been presented to the city council? Why, has that been presented to the city council?
Planning commission members, no, sir. No, sir, Mr. Dice. The developer requested that the zoning change, annexation to zoning change, be withheld from the city council agenda until this subdivision case could be heard again by the planning commission.
Okay. All right. I'm with you.
When I first looked at this, back in the May meeting, I expressed a question about how are you going to turn around, get through into that place? And you and I had a conversation on this. Thank you, Richard Johnson, for helping out on this. Could you just explain to the people where that happened so that you could actually turn around in this place?
Yes, sir, planning commission members. And so, my apologies for not having a construction drawing on the screen for you. So I'll use one of the color renderings to explain it. And in fact, if you can bear with me just a moment. So if you look at the excerpt, this drawing on this slide is the excerpt of the plat. And it's a bit difficult to see, but if you notice at the end, if you look at the southeast corner, and you see where the street ends right there, carved out, there are two turnaround easements that are reflected here on the plat. The construction drawings reflected as what we colloquially refer to as a hammerhead. They're accomplishing it by, as we have the drawings right now, they would accomplish that by building it as a hammerhead, but leaving that as a part of a lot under a turnaround easement.
Which lots are repacted by that?
So...
12 and 11.
12 and 11, yes.
11 and 12.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. It's an ingenious solution.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'll call the engineer for the developer up, Ursula.
Okay. Hopefully, I won't need that. Good afternoon. Ursula Godwin, Sawgrass Consulting. Really don't have anything in addition to add beyond Buford's presentation here. We did provide a pretty lengthy report that sort of went through some of the history of Pinewood subdivision from Phase 1 all the way through. I know there was a lot of confusion in previous meetings about, you know, things said, things implied, you know, misunderstandings, what was going to happen to Phase 1, what was happening with Lot 7, all of those different things. So we took the liberty to go through the minutes and all of the videos for the planning commission meetings that had to do with either Pinewood Phase 1 or Pinewood Phase 2, and addressed all of those concerns and items, and provided some clarification and whatnot. I think y'all may have gotten a copy of that in your reports, but we're here to answer any of those questions or anything else that you may have. But again, like Buford said, Doug Chaffin is here. He's our engineer of record. And then, of course, we've got Matt Byrne and Todd Booth, who are LA Development. They are the developers, so they're present tonight, too, in case you have questions for them specifically.
Well, a lot of people are asking questions about what D.R. Horton's salespeople said in the neighborhood next door.
Right.
And y'all had absolutely nothing to do with that.
That's right. I mean, we, you know, and part of the deal, you know, there was multiple people that came up during the first hearing on Pinewood Phase 2. And I want to say, there may have even been one or two during Pinewood Phase 1 that all spoke about, you know, maybe what they had been told or what they understood was going to happen with that property in the future. And, you know, we went through in that report, and basically, you know, I didn't go through everybody, but all of the individuals that spoke or brought a concern to the planning commission in one of those meetings, we went through and pulled their deed, and then cross-referenced that to when the developer actually sold that lot to D.R. Horton. And some of them were, you know, almost two years before, or between the time the lot was sold to D.R. Horton, and then by the time this homeowner purchased the lot. So, you know, we really don't have a lot of control over maybe what they were told or understood, or maybe misunderstood. You know, I think sometimes what happens there is the term unzoned property, because that doesn't limit uses. I think sometimes that becomes confusing to people, especially maybe those of them that don't do like we do on a regular basis. And so, maybe they misunderstand that to believe that there's not a use for the property. I don't know. But nonetheless, you know, we weren't involved with that. The developers weren't involved with that. That was one of the primary reasons for asking them to come tonight, so that they could clarify any of that that they could.
And also, people had a question about another cut through to Manly Road, but I think you were saying that Jonathan actually didn't want another cut through to Manly Road.
That's right. So, you know, in the review of the original meeting for Pinewood Phase 1, there was some discussion about the Lot 7 and that being a, you know, a remnant parcel, if you will, or whatnot. And, you know, Jonathan Smith, the planning director at the time, explained to the planning commission. Some of you were on that commission at that time, some of you aren't. But basically, what he explained to us at that time, and it provided to us as well, was the subdivision regulations prohibit double-frontage lots. So, you know, all of those lots that had some sort of frontage on Manly Road would be required to front Manly Road, and therefore, we could not have a road that ran along the rear of those lots. So that was sort of the reason for the creation of the six lots along Manly. There was discussion with staff, and then there was further discussion with Jonathan about there being that additional access to Manly Road for Lot 7. And Jonathan, at that time, told us it was not allowed per the subdivision regulations because of a 660-foot distance. You know, I'm not sure if that was applied correctly, but basically, that limited that ability for us to put a curb cut in during Phase 1 to allow for a secondary access. We were limited to the primary access of Silage Drive, which now is going to be renamed to Dutch possibly, but it's limited to that single point. You know, and sort of like we talked about then, and I think there was a pretty decent discussion there in Phase 1, that, you know, obviously, everybody acknowledged some idea that that thing most likely wasn't going to stay, you know, one seven-acre lot forever. Something was going to happen there. And then, it sort of, you know, there's been a couple of discussions about that since. But, so we were sort of limited in future development. You know, like I said, I know Jonathan's not here anymore. It's hard for him to, you know, come back and say one way or the other. But that's, you know, in review of the minutes in that video, I mean, it's pretty plain as day. I mean, I think we even noted the times on the video for it, but...
Sure. Commissioner, there's any other questions for the engineer while he's up here? All right. Thank you. In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. I've got one name listed, Edward Jackson. You can come up and have the floor first, and if you don't mind, please state your address, so Emily can get it for the record.
Good evening. Edward Jackson, 106 Open Field Drive. I'm a Saddlewood resident and the president of the homeowner association. I know I spoke last time when this came up before the planning commission, and thank you guys for all that you do. I know it's sometimes a thankless job, but we do appreciate what you do. Our concern, you know, as it has been initially, was that we're getting a subdivision inside of our subdivision. We are managed by an HOA. It helps us to maintain our subdivision. I did see, which, as long as it's going to happen, item number 7 on the surveyor's depiction of Phase 2, it says that they will have HOA, which, if that actually is what would happen, that would be helpful to us to know that there will be some management of what's happening in our neighborhood. Is there a way of putting that on the record, that they will have to have that?
Well, isn't that a part before the final plat that the HOA is confirmed setup?
And, Mr. Chairman?
That is absolutely a requirement, because this is a true subdivision development where there are, there's infrastructure that has to be maintained, so it's absolutely certain. And generally, that is already on the actual approved, that will be on the final plat of this subdivision. So it's absolutely required by the subdivision regulations.
Okay. Thank you. The second item was, in the application for Pinewood Phase 2, the discussion about stormwater standards, it references some connectivity to Saddlewood stormwater, which our retention pond is maintained by our HOA dues. So does that mean that they're tying into our stormwater, which we would have to maintain the additional amount of water from their neighborhood?
Let me take this question down and any others that you have, and then I'll get the staff to answer those. And your concern about the stormwater coming into your retention pond?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I'm going to, after, when I close the public hearing, I'll call the staff and/or engineer up to answer those specific questions. Does anybody else wish to speak at this time to this item? All right. In that case, I will close the public hearing at this time. Ursula, could you, or who would like to answer the question about the stormwater as far as we could?
Doug Chaffin with Sawgrass, I'm the engineer of record.
Just go back to the one that chose the overall layout of the...
So, existing right now, the way the topography works, there is an amount of stormwater that already goes into the Saddlewood neighborhood from this lot. So what we have done is there's a small portion up in the northwest corner of that that we can't catch just from topography and the way that the Silage Road already runs, that will drain into the road and get caught by the road. Now, we have burned up around that southeast corner and caught some additional flows that are going onto the Saddlewood property now, and turned those around and put them into the pond. So what we have done overall is actually limit the amount that is going from the site onto the Saddlewood property, even though there's a portion of it that we just can't capture due to topography and the way that road already slopes. And it gets caught by the two inlets that are there at the curb returns within Silage Drive at, within Saddlewood.
So basically, where we show the water issue in the common area, all of that goes toward the soccer fields?
Yes, it goes into the pond, and we have a structure at the pond, and there's a ditch that separates the soccer fields from the site, and it goes into the ditch. Then that heads north to a catchment that takes that on out.
So, and it looks like that behind Lot 2 and 3, it goes north of basically, it looks like Lot 1.
Right. So Lot 1 and a portion of Lot 2, those front portions of those do slope to the road, and that portion of the road goes and gets caught by, there's two inlets within the Saddlewood neighborhood that's right there on Silage Drive at the curb returns, and they will go into that. That portion already goes there. Now, it's undeveloped, and it's a larger portion, but we have made it smaller and then caught some that, in addition to that, in the southwest corner, they used to go on there, and now put it into the pond, so it doesn't impact them.
So at the end of the day, they're not going to have more water dumped on them than that's currently going there pre-developed.
We have reduced the amount that actually goes onto the Saddlewood neighborhood from this site.
Okay. Good enough. Any other questions for the engineer? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I think if you just clarified the HOA stuff?
Buford clarified that they...
Yeah. The subdivision requires an HOA be established.
Motion, Mr. Chairman? Reference to case number SD 18 point 32, Pinewood Phase 2, a move that we approve subject staff recommendations, including the LID waiver.
Motion to approve subject staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Have a second. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say, I liked it prior, and I tell you, the improvements y'all made, I think you did a great job. I like it even better now, especially the connectivity with the green space there. No further discussion? Then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ZC zoning change. Public hearing to consider the request of Philly LSC to establish initial zoning of R2 media density, single-family residential on the south side of 104, approximately a half mile east of County Road 13.
All right. This is, let's see. Property is approximately 35 acres, connects to Highway 104 on the northern side and Mosley Road on the southern side of the property. It's currently undeveloped. There is a natural feature which goes through the site and, which represents the headwaters of Fly Creek. We performed a compatibility analysis on the site, as well as we reviewed, let's see, based on the aerial and on the fact that the only zoning within a quarter-mile buffer around the site consists of R1 and R2 zoning districts. Everything to the north is unzoned. And on the applicant's zoning request, being consistent with the R1 and R2 zoning designations within the buffer, staff supports the request for rezoning. There would be some increased traffic to the surrounding area. One thing to say, they could, I believe it was 145 lots, if they developed it as R2, but because of that natural feature, they're really limited to approximately 45 lots. They've submitted a sketch plat to us, so that kind of throws that compatibility analysis off a little bit, but there was not really an issue with this from a zoning perspective. One caution is the natural resources that runs through there. That's a pretty sensitive area. And from initial discussions with them, they were going to try to stay out of that as much as possible.
So this is a, this is out of the city limits, and they're looking to get this brought into the city limits and zone R2.
Right.
But it's not a conditional, because we don't have a plan for the...
It's conditional because it's not coming in as R1.
R2, but I mean, but we don't have a site plan, in other words.
No, not at this time.
That's what's throwing me off. Usually, there's a site plan that's conditional on the site plan being approved, and the, okay. I just wanted to...
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, if you annex into the city without requesting a zoning, it's automatically R1A, R1. And if you ask for something different, it's considered a conditional annexation, and that's why we have a hearing, almost like a rezoning hearing for the annexation.
Right. Just, all that threw me off is normally, it seems like there's a plan brought in at the same time, but I guess that would be...
But they did submit a sketch plat, just so we could see, basically, the number of lots that could be expected with regards to that natural feature.
Okay. I understand. I just had, just a little slow, had to catch up. All right. In that case, I will go ahead and...
Well, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Nancy. Nancy. I think it was last month, we had an issue on Highway 104. It was east of 181, 500 lots proposed or whatever. Right across from Dick Higbee Road on the south side, next to the church, high school up Dick Higbee Road, 500 units on the south side. And now, with this one, this one, and then there's another one that's on the agenda tonight, right across the street from it.
Right.
Where is the, where's the, is there going to be a coordination as it relates to traffic on Highway 104? Now, let me make one point. In our meeting last week, or last month, the engineer said traffic study wasn't warranted because they were going to do it in phases and blah, 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 blah. And that when they did Highway 181 down to 104, that was going to solve the problem. Well, I have news for you. They did Highway 181 down to Highway 64. It didn't no more solve the problem. It didn't do anything but create an additional problem. So my question is, you got this one, you got one across the street, and now you got a third one tonight, which is over on the northeast corner of Dick Higbee Road and 104. Where's, help me with some coordination.
Sure. Well, the large one that's down by the church was withdrawn.
That 481 lot subdivision has been withdrawn, and so that's not on the table anymore.
One thing I would like to mention, and Richard can speak to this as well, 181 and 104 are state highways, and so we have limited jurisdiction over those as far as how they are going to be dealing with those developments. They have to get permits from ALDOT to access the roadway, so we have a very limited ability to make any kind of change unless we can put pressure on ALDOT. Bear in mind, they are letting a contract, I believe, for fore-lating of 104 north, so that's underway now, I believe, Richard.
Wait. You mean 181?
I'm sorry, 181. I'm sorry. 181 north from 104. And so, that's underway. But as far as the, you know, as far as the traffic impacts, I mean, obviously, if these were city-maintained roads, we would be very concerned about that. However, we have limited authority of the ALDOT to, you know, to require things that ALDOT may need. Richard, you want anything to add?
Well, why did they do a traffic study on the 500-acre one, I mean, 500-watt subdivision there? If we didn't, to present to us if we didn't have a, if we didn't have any jurisdiction over that.
Well, that traffic study is not really to address whether or not the traffic's going to increase on Highway 104 or 181, you know it is. That traffic study is just the safety of getting people in and out of the subdivision, whether you need a deceleration lane or an acceleration lane.
Well, that was the point, but that's an improvement.
With our traffic studies, we can't deny things based on it's increasing the traffic, it's just, you know, the traffic studies are more acceleration and deceleration and getting people in and out safely.
That's right, but we've also had discussions about health, safety, and welfare of the public, and certainly that falls under that per se, in my opinion.
True.
And I'll give you two bits of information. One, depending upon what type of application is, but when it gets to a preliminary plat and there is a trigger, meaning that if the proposed development's going to generate a peak traffic in excess of 50 units at peak, then they have to do the full-blown traffic impact study. And since, if you're going to connect to a state road with any type of use that has potential for generation, they're going to want to see that traffic impact study as well in the consideration of the permits. The one good news that is happening as far as coordination, as you know, we are a member of the Eastern Shore MPO, as is ALDOT sits on all of those boards as well. They're part of the technical advisory committee, they sit on the policy board, and the MPO is now tracking everything that the planning commissions do by what they are, the number of lots, potential units, et cetera, et cetera. So at least ALDOT is getting that information on a quarterly basis. What they're doing with it, I could not tell you, but they can't say that they're not being kept abreast as applications are going through an approval process and they have that information by the number of lots or units or whatever that is. The challenge that we face, and I think ALDOT has the same challenge we do, is that even when they start a plan to address capacity, by the time they execute it, whatever capacity is gained is almost used up at that point in time. I mean, I've, the whole time that I have lived in Baldwin County, I think the year we moved here is when the county gave 27, which is now 181, to the state, and I think gave them $12 million to boot that was going to four-lane it all the way down to 98. And now, what, 13 and a half, 14 years later, we're just starting construction on the next phase to go south of Milton Jones Road, they're just south of 64. That's the reality we live in. But they are being kept aware of what is going on at these meetings, how they're using that information for planning, I don't have a great answer there. But understand, every one of these applications, before they can get through a preliminary, they have sat down with ALDOT and found out what they're going to have to do to connect and what mitigations will have to occur, whether it be decel, turn lanes, et cetera, et cetera. And ALDOT has the ability to push them out to any node that they want to and say, you're going to have to participate in signalization or adding additional turn lanes. They have the ultimate authority to say, if you want to connect, these are the things that you have to do. So that's the process we live in. I would love for every one of these applications that there be an ALDOT rep here to discuss it with you, but they don't like doing that. They're not going to make any judgment calls until there's a hard application in front of them with complete details of what the development is.
Richard, if I might remember, I questioned the large project that was withdrawn last time because I thought they were underestimating the traffic difficulty, they just thought they had a whole bunch of traffic lights. Doesn't work like that. I was on the MPO for New Orleans for eight years and chaired the transportation committee for six of those years. One of the things that I think should absolutely happen is that we bring in the MPO, which we call the RPC over there, bring in the MPO to have them give us a briefing, not only to us but to applicants, as to what's going to happen. We've got four major road construction projects going on here right now, and what we're doing is approving projects that are going to impact that, and they're planning something and it's like two ships that are passing in tonight, one of them being the Titanic. So what we're going to have to do is to get somebody to come in here and give us a briefing with some charts so that Wayne and those guys have something they can show us when they come in with something, say, this is what you're facing and this is what our plan's for, and there aren't going to be 33 traffic lights.
They've got that presentation too, they did it to our Rotary Club. They've got a little dog and pony show they do that would be good for us to sit.
Thank you. I had to add real quick to you about the traffic studies. I think you mentioned this a minute ago, that when we do traffic studies, we're looking for turn lanes, we're looking for a warrant study for a turn lane. Some jurisdictions, a traffic study considers the capacity of the roadway. We all know that a lane can carry X amount of cars per hour and there's peak times, those kind of things. That's not the kind of traffic study we're talking about. We usually do just a warrant study for turn lanes and signalization, those kind of things. When you talk about a traffic study that includes capacity of the roadways, that's a much, much bigger project that involves multiple jurisdictions, which is uncommon for Alabama, I think. So I'm not sure, that takes into consideration a lot of impacts that we can't control, so. But we do, we do, we work with what we have. Again, turn lanes and those kind of things, we do that very well. And again, this is being on state highways, we have limited authority to do certain things. But so far, I think ALDOT has been, you know, when it comes to the roadways and permitting turn lanes, those kind of things, they've been allowing that and have worked well, I think, with the developers. And I say there's not any problems because the bigger problem is capacity and that's something we don't have the ability to look at on our own.
I didn't ask, John, do you have anything to add before I open the, before I open the public hearing?
This is a zoning application, we haven't applied for the preliminary plat, excuse me, I'm John Avant with Dewberry. The development that's probably, I think, next on the agenda is North Hill is actually directly across the street from this subject property. And we have conducted a traffic study and one thing that ALDOT does look at and one thing they do require is not only the proposed intersection that you're modeling for your traffic, but they also require the major intersections on both sides of the turnout. So with North Hills, this has been modeled with the 181 traffic and probably has gone down as far as 13. So the whole big picture is we're looking at. So, and then again, you know, it's current condition, I think on North Hill, the traffic study took into account of the proposed 181. But I'm jumping ahead, this particular project here has limited site distance, so, and with the turn lane and all the improvements going to North Hill, we cannot put in a left turn lane going in. So what we're proposing when we will come back is a right in and right out only within this subdivision. It will not have a left turn going into it. So, and that will be, once we get to this point, we will include that, you know, if it's 45 lots, we'll include it with the other traffic study and model it again. But then again, we're just looking at a zoning application here, so.
Would you object to us getting more guidance as to the upgrading of these highways in that area?
Object to what? I'm sorry, sir.
Well, us getting more information so that we can work more closely with you on the development that's going on.
Sure. You know, but then again, ALDOT, and Richard and Wayne both said it, we have to work closely with ALDOT with these traffic studies. They just don't rubber stamp these. They really...
You have information from ALDOT that we don't necessarily get from ALDOT.
Right.
It would be interesting if we were all on the same page to a greater degree than we appear to be. And maybe the staff gets that, but up there, Art and I are looking at this and thinking, all I know is I get stuck in traffic there all the time and it's going to get worse.
Yes, and I understand what Art was saying about 181 and 64. My office is right off 64 and I can, it's bad, but, you know, it's a problem if our infrastructure around here is in dire need of upgrading. 104 probably actually needs to be a five-lane section. Another thing, ALDOT would love to go out and have five-lane sections and all that, but we're limited with money. We're broke.
That's your fault.
So that's basically it.
All right, I will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. This is for a zoning change of R2. And once again, we just make a recommendation to the city council on this and city council ultimately will decide. Would anybody wish to speak to this item at this time? And when not, I will close the public hearing and turn this over to the, oh, yes, sir.
My name's Ken Mayfield.
And if you'll state your address also.
It's 9119B Mosley Road. And so my property backs up to this piece of property. And there's a, when it rains, there's a tremendous amount of water that flows through my property right onto that property. So there's a, there's a large area that then feeds down into, I guess, the head of Fly Creek. And so there's a lot of that property that is inundated with water. And so is that, is that being looked at? How much of that is wetlands or watershed or whatever it is back there that this project might disturb? And am I going to be responsible for water that flows, that's always flowed through my property, onto that property?
Well, that's why I was a little questioning earlier. Normally, when we get these rezoning changes, we also have a site plan.
Exactly.
And we don't yet. So right now, we're just talking about the zoning. They've got no infrastructure proposals for streets, roads, water retention or anything.
Yeah, so you can't really...
So that would come later, you'd get a notice when a subdivision comes up at some point.
Wayne, can you turn to page two? Nancy, can you...
One page of this, that's it.
Here it is.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add though, but let me, I mean...
This is, this is an example. But that's got the, that's got that drainage basin, and I've been on this property, this particular property, and that's got that drainage basin fairly adequately identified.
And we have in the requirements of our subdivision regulations, we have a requirement for a buffer for, if it is a stream, I believe it's a 50-foot buffer for streams. So they will need to comply at the time of subdivision. We're looking at the drainage to buffer all of those items.
We don't allow, we don't allow subdivision for lots platted in wetlands, so that's pretty much why you see all of those lots over onto the east side of this, this 35 acres.
That's also why...
But as far as that goes right there, they could sell this property, you know, we could rezone this R2 or not rezone it or what have you, they could sell the property tomorrow. This is, there's no application for that, there's no water retention for that, there's no engineering for that. That's just a schematic that I could make out not being an engineer. I mean, at some point in the future, you know, it's basically showing how there's, you know, possibly some uplands to build on, but at some point in the future, they'll have to go in there and survey that and check the wetlands and the drainage basin and come back with a proposal in the future that could look like this or may not.
Right, and they're bringing access over onto Mosley Road, so then will that, that amount of traffic that would come out of those lots be looked at for that road?
Excuse me.
Because one of the problems on that road is our driveway comes right out below a hill and we already have problems with people flying over that hill at this point in time where, you know, it's supposed to be 20 miles an hour and they're doing 30 and 40 and 50 miles an hour now through there.
That's traffic control.
Yeah, again, that would all come forward at a subdivision in the future, which we do ultimately decide subdivisions.
I'd also like to point out that being unzoned, the property could go for multi-occupancy or a much higher density. This is a medium-density, single-family designation that they are requesting, which limits them in terms of density.
There's certainly, when you're out of the city limits and unzoned, you know, it'd be anything from a machine shop to all the things Jack Grohl was talking about earlier. So there's certainly an advantage, you know, for you being a neighbor having it zoned knowing at some point it would be a subdivision rather than something that might be a lot more negative, but...
Yeah, except that, you know, if you look at all the lots right around it, they're all bigger pieces of property and, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case number ZC 18-09, move that we recommended the city council to approve R2 zoning.
Got a motion to approve R2 zoning. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Johnny, we're wrong on one thing, the North Hills is the next one after this, so we do have one more in between. Next item is Hamlet at Old Battles Village, SD 1834. Nancy?
Thank you. This request is to consider the request of Truland Homes LLC for preliminary plat approval of the Hamlet at Old Battles Village Phase Five, a 42-lot subdivision. It's located on the west side of Garrison Boulevard and north of Old Battles Village Phase Four. The applicant is Battles Plain Capital and the authorized agent is Dewberry LLC. The total tract of the property is approximately 12.47 acres. The largest lot is 17,048 square feet and the smallest is 8,100 square feet. The PUD has not been to planning commission to date, so that is listed, city council, sorry, that's listed as a condition of approval. There were a couple items on the water...
The date hasn't been...
Okay, okay. The, there were some water and sewer, not concerns, but just some details we were working out. Richard Peterson has since approved those. And there were some public work items that I've looked at. Richard Johnson requested some easements and things on the property. I've checked them, but he hasn't had the benefit to look at them, so they're highlighted there, so. Do you have any questions?
All right.
I just noticed a couple on the school district.
Yes, I knew you were going to catch that.
You had that as the intermediate on the front page and then on...
It should be Newton.
And then on four, on page four, it's the Fairhope Elementary, which...
It's Newton.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be Newton, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Nancy. John, are you presenting this?
Yes. John Avant with Dewberry, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
If there are no questions now, I'll go ahead and open and close the public hearing and I'll make a list of any questions and call you back up. All right, SD 1834, this is a subdivision approval, so this one does end here. Does anybody like to speak to Hamlet at Old Battles Village? All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the item over to the commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case SD 18.34, Hamlet at Old Battles Village, I move that we approve it, subject staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next item on the agenda is North Hills at Fairhope, ZC, this is a zoning change, 1810.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so Mr. Avant alluded to this, Mr. Avant alluded to this project earlier on an earlier item. And so what we're considering today is a conditional annexation. We'll go through the details here. You see the zoning map there on this slide right here, included in your packet, and you'll see a sample of it on a slide, is we have a copy of the proposed preliminary plat for the subdivision case that you will see in the very near future. And so using that subdivision case information, the subdivision case will request 112 lots on 96.8 acres. You see the additional background information there. There's actually going to be two zoning establishments, we'll explain that in detail here in the next couple of slides. Here, we just explain more of the background information and also the surrounding notable properties to subject property. This is, of course... This is, of course, roughly halfway between County Road 13 and County Road and State Highway 181 along the north side of Highway 104. You'll notice it's due east of that one piece of rectangular property on the Gulf Coast Experiment Station. So this is a concurrent annexation rezoning request. It's currently unzoned, Baldwin County. The request is to make the area that you'll see on a future slide to zone it to annex it and zone it to R2. The area that'll be R2 is 13.47 acres inside that 96.8 that we mentioned previously. We'll note that a portion of the waters is adjoining the property, and you notice here it explains the other nearby existing developments. The... As we mentioned here, the subdivision case will be considered by the Planning Commission at a future meeting. Like we said earlier, 112 single-family lots over 96.8 acres. That is a development density of 1.16 units per acre. The balance of that 96.8 acre site above and beyond the 13.47 acres that we're asking requests for R2 zoning will actually be requested for R1 low-density, single-family zoning via a separately submitted application submitted directly to the Fairhope City Council. And so what I'll call your attention to on the bottom of this slide is the intention of the developer is to concurrently submit both of these cases to the city council, so that way the request for R1 zoning, which is a direct request to the city council, and this case, this case in its request for R2 zoning, can hopefully appear on the same agenda for coordination purposes. What we have on this slide is, this is an excerpt of the preliminary plat we discussed earlier. The shaded area shows the 13.47 acres considered for R2 zoning. And you'll notice a breakdown of the R1 and R2 lots is in the small chart below, which is also in your packet. So in this case, the eventual subdivision case will have the smallest lot of just over 14,000 square feet and the largest of over 54,000 square feet. The lot numbers are broken down in that chart right there as well as in your packet. We'll talk about our favorite topic, which is compatibility analysis.
Quickly, please.
Yes, sir. And I think we've refined, we have better refined, we have better refined how we handle this. And we won't get too carried away describing it, but you'll notice the standard quarter-mile buffer that we draw around the subject property. You'll see it right there. And you see the acreages of the entire buffer plus less the subject property. And so here is, as you'll recall, we always look at actual and allowable density. Now, because of the large number of undeveloped properties around this subject property, when we look at our buffer analysis, the surrounding properties have an actual weighted density of .334 units per acre. That reflects the very low density, and that reflects, if it's an undeveloped piece of property, we represent it by zero units per acre. We combine that with the actual, or excuse me, with the allowable based upon its zoning, if it's zoned, or the provisions in the subdivision regulations for unzoned properties. And so you'll notice there, and you'll notice there in that bullet point in the far right, so you have, if you look at the allowable, that's 2.254 units per acre. The average of the two, actual allowable, gives you a development density in that buffer area of 1.294 units per acre. So we'll make some development density conclusions. Obviously, 1.294 units per acre, and we're requesting just over one per unit per acre, 1.16 units per acre. Now, obviously, if you isolate the R2 area, isolate it to itself because of the number of lots and the size of that 13.47 acres, that gives you 2.3 units per acre. So we have that macro versus micro versus macro argument. The conclusion that we made at the staff level is at the macro level, that 1.16 units per acre overall for the entire development is 10% less than the weighted average development density of all the adjacent properties and surrounding neighborhoods. So the other criteria, as you saw before, some of the other criteria that we evaluate for a zoning change is compliance with the comprehensive plan. And you see in the inset map how we have the subject property shaded in a crosshatch. And so, again, this slide synthesizes a lot of the details from the staff report. We can go into this in detail to answer any questions. But the conclusion basically is that the comprehensive plan does support this development because it aids in the density transition that the comprehensive plan talks about at that node, at that proposed village node at the intersection of Highway 104 and Highway 181. So some concluding remarks. We mentioned here that it's surrounded by the, it's adjacent to the Gulf Coast Experiment Station property. That is not expected to be developed. It's heavily wooded right now. That is not expected to be developed in any time in the future. As we mentioned previously about the comprehensive plan, number two right there, this serves as an anchor point that allows future higher-density or higher-intensity development associated with Highway 181 and 104 to occur, and then allows that density transition through this proposed site. And then we reiterate here in item number three, reiterate item number three, that the overall development density of the subdivision you will see is less than the weighted average development densities of that property. We also make some mention in here about some lot sizes, the, for the R2 region, but the overall development density of this is lower than what's in the adjacent areas of the surrounding neighborhood. So with those facts in mind, staff's recommendation is approval of case number ZC 18.10, approval of case ZC 18.10 for the property there, and forward it to the city council for consideration.
Questions for staff?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Let me be sure I understand. They want us to rezone, not us to rezone, want us to have approval to recommend to the city council for R2 on 13-point, somewhat acres, but they're going to take the balance of the 96 acres directly to the city council for R1 zoning, which is appropriate, then we come to us for R1 zoning, because it's being brought into the city, and normally it gets brought in as R1.
Yes, sir.
But without that, well, I guess it's just, it's got to be concurrent, because otherwise it doesn't, it's not adjacent to the city limits.
No, sir. No, sir. That, it almost absolutely mandatory that you have concurrent consideration.
And bear in mind that...
You can't spot zone 13 acres.
Right. But bear in mind, right now, it's in unincorporated Baldwin County, and the minimum lot width would not work with, and so that's why they need R2. The R2 would be less than the minimum 100-foot lot width. So without that, their plat will not be consistent with the...
But we don't have a plat on this.
But when it does come, well, you want to explain that, Buford?
Because here's what I get heartburn over, and I mean, I got no, I mean, I assume that they're asking, I mean, the density at 96 acres with 112 lots would easily hold R1, so I'm assuming they're going to have two different products with small lots and large lots. But we're basically making a recommendation to city council to zone the whole thing R2, which I may not have a problem with, but they changed their mind.
No, the whole thing's not being on R2.
We're just going to do 13 acres.
Yeah. The property's 96 acres, there are 13 acres that's going to be, that they're requesting R2 for, because the other, the balance of the R1A would be, R1 would be consistent with the typical voluntary annexation.
I understand, but I'm saying what I'm reading here. What I'm reading says 112 lots on 96.8 acres that we're recommending to say R2 for the entire portion, not the 13.8.
Are you on page two?
I'm on page one.
Go to page two, down below the plat that's right there, where it says further, the balance, well, it says, "Approved as city of Fairhope R2, the future subdivision application will include the aforementioned 112 single-family lots, one full access entrance, blah, blah, blah. Further, the balance of the 96.8 acres acre site above and beyond the 13.47 acres considered by this request shall be requested for R1 low-density, single-family via separately submitted application directly to the city council."
Well, I guess it doesn't really matter, because all we're doing is making a recommendation anyway, and the city council will then look at it together holistically.
Now, this was submitted in conjunction with a preliminary plat. The preliminary plat did not make it to the agenda for a couple of reasons we're working with the engineering staff on. So there was one accompanying it. So before it goes forward, that will have to be, I mean, you know, any rezoning would be, any plat would be conditioned upon the rezoning being approved.
Are there any amenities?
On the plat, there is. This is going to be, as we were, as I believe in meeting with the developer and their engineer, very similar to the waters.
Chairman, commissioners, you will very well see the subdivision application associated with this property on the November agenda. And so we'll have a full and complete subdivision application with all the construction drawings, explaining the amenities that goes along with the subdivision. And just like we do typically with other applications, a condition of approval of that subdivision will be city council approval of the two zoning.
Right, yeah. What my concern would be, if we were the final decision on a rezoning, if we made this motion, and then all of a sudden they changed their mind, the whole thing could be R2. But since we just make a recommendation, then the city council will obviously see our recommendation, it's just for the 13.8 acres to be R2.
Right, right. And their application request is just for that 13-point acre. The rezoning request is only for that 13.
Absolutely. Commissioners, I put that slide back on, and I apologize for it not being clear, but I put the slide back on the screen that shows just the 13.47 acres that we're considering with this case.
Okay, I understand. Thank you, Buford. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Well, unless, Trey, do you have anything to add at this time before I open the public hearing? Is this your, this is yours, isn't it?
That's John.
Okay, so that, okay. Anyway, John, do you have anything to add at this point?
I think that they need to check this test point. It's off about two tenths of a percentage of...
I'll accept that under advisement.
Did John want another, you want to hear about the compatibility analysis again, John? We can go through that in detail.
All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to the commissioners.
All right, I got it. Motion, Mr. Chairman, case number ZC 18.10, North Hills at Fairhope. A move that we recommend to the city council approval of R2 zoning for this 13.47 acres.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is SD 18.36. This is a subdivision request, County Road 32 and Mandra Lane out near my house.
Yes, this subdivision is outside the corporate limits, the police jurisdiction and the permit jurisdiction, but inside the planning jurisdiction. And basically, it is a final plat for nine lots. The property is approximately 30.7 acre, 30, I'm sorry, 30.07 acres. The smallest lot is 1.78 acres, and the largest is 13.6 acres. And we have conducted a final inspection on there. The only condition of approval were the fire hydrant markers that needed to be installed. They have since been installed and inspected, so this subdivision is ready to go.
Anybody have any questions for staff?
Is this, determine this is or is not a phased development?
They put a note on the plat to...
Yes or no?
They're saying that it is not at this time, and they have added a note to the plat, if I can read.
Page two, number five.
If you'll look at note, I believe it is, okay, note number seven on the plat says lots one through eight within the subdivision shall not be resubdivided to create additional lots. Lot nine, as shown on this plat, is a single-family lot in the future, and any proposed resubdivision of the lot will require review by the city of Fairhope and Baldwin County for compliance with their respective subdivision regulations. So that's how they've addressed it.
All right. Anybody here wish to speak on behalf of the developer?
I'm not a developer, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing in just one moment. Anybody here wish to speak on behalf of the developer? I mean, if you don't have anything to say, I'll go open the public hearing, but you're here then. Okay, great. I'll go ahead in that case, and I will open the public hearing at this point. So ma'am, if you'll come up and state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Connie Coffin, 12415 Old Timney Lane. I'm on the southeast corner. I missed the original meeting because it wasn't mine at the time. My main concern is being on the southeast corner, that property has a lot of water runoff that runs off onto the lane and into my property. I just kind of wanted to see how that's going to be addressed, because we get flooding in the front, and my driveway gets washout. So I don't know if that's possible for me to be able to see.
Yeah, at this point, they've already done the storm infrastructure, but I'll ask the developer to explain that to you.
Okay.
Just a moment. Any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? If you could come up and address what you did. And again, where is here, which corner are you located?
I'm on the southeast corner.
Jared Landry, Dewberry. And the natural draw goes to that southeast corner. She is correct. But due to the large lots, we don't have any ponds or any infrastructure in place. We're not increasing the flow, so right now, our pre is basically our post as far as drainage. I mean, I'm here to say we're not making it better, we're not making it worse.
And we did make them add language. And Nancy, I'm going to be a little bit exact, however, the commitment was that as each lot develops, they shall account for and make sure that they do not drag water to a single point, and that it shall be back to a open and neutral for these lots. That is a headed requirement at the time of development. But these are, the smallest lot is 1.7 acres, and the largest is nine.
Well, lot nine is 13.61 acres, so these are large, large lots. But, you know, there's already a drainage problem. They're not going to add to it, but they're not corrected either.
Well, you're putting roofs on, I mean, it's going to increase it some. Putting roofs on even an acre lot can increase the runoff some, but...
When we gave him a drainage analysis, I think it was a couple gallons, basically. I mean, we'll say a 3,000-square-foot house on 1.78 acres is negligible.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions from all the developers up here?
Think there's anything you can do to help solve the drainage problem? I mean, is there anything reasonable that could be done?
There's really not, truthfully.
So what happens when lot number nine's developed?
You'll have to come back and...
Yeah, they'll have to come back if anybody decides to subdivide it.
Right.
But this is, everything's already been done, so basically, you know, we're just, at this point, you kind of came to the dance a little bit late. The lights are about to be turned out, because they've already done the work, so now we're just, this process is not approving a subdivision, or do we like what's being done or not, it's simply have they done what they said they were going to do, which the staff has told us that they have. So anyway, just for, just to clarify. So, all right. Any other questions for the developer?
I have two.
Okay, if not, I'll go ahead, I'm going to, nobody else in the public wishes to speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thanks.
And commissioners? I'll entertain a motion, or let's see, I have questions for staff or anybody?
Come on, y'all. Somebody got to step up now. It gets old reading in the minutes where I'm the only one that makes the motion.
Yeah, but it's far.
That's what you were thinking about, wasn't it, Lee?
Yeah. All right. Next meeting, I come to you when you're not here, I'm walking out the back door.
My motion is made to approve this. I make the motion.
Okay.
To approve this zoning for case SD 18.36.
Charles Johnson makes a motion to approve SD 1836 as per staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
See if you can get a second for the left side this time.
Second.
Thank you. Oh, Charles, you man.
Without Richard, it's going to get voted down if Richard seconds it, so...
It'll tilt him to the right.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Final item on the agenda, other than older new business, is a informal review of a 264-unit multiple occupancy project, properties located at the northeast intersection of Higbee Road and State Highway 104. Who is going to present that?
Never mind, somebody's coming, I didn't see Trey.
Okay.
Good evening, Max Dearing with Jade Consulting. I'm here on behalf of our client to speak about this project. It's located at the northeast corner of Higbee Road and 104, and the property is currently Baldwin County unzoned. And what we have planned conceptually to do at this time is a two-lot subdivision, then have a commercial and office space located on the south lot, which will be approximately 9.72 acres, and then high-end market rate apartments on the north lot, 264 units, which is approximately 22 acres, so that'd be 12 units an acre, which meets the Baldwin County Both lots, the north and the south, would have to go through a multiple occupancy review from the City of Fairhope. Right there shown potential renderings that could be of the apartments planned. If y'all have any questions or suggestions, I'd be happy to take them now.
Yeah. Back on, this is not my primary question, but back on the issue associated with Highway 104, 200, how many units?
64.
Calculate, 240?
264 units.
264 residential units that are going to dump out on Higbee Road, right?
Correct.
Right below the, right below the high school.
Yes, sir.
Then on that 181 more than likely, or they could go north on Higbee Road and come out.
Yes, sir.
At another spot. Okay, there's item number one. One of the problems, and we debated this a lot back in the days when district zoning was being enacted in Baldwin County, the commercial area that you've got down here, I see where it says, "Commercial shops and restaurants." Is there any kind of, I mean, is there any kind of support facilities that you would envision out here, meaning where somebody go buy a loaf of bread or a gallon of milk without having to drive, to tax our infrastructure any further than what is already taxed to drive five miles to go do that?
Well, you know, at this point, I cannot answer that question. The developer is here, if he would like to speak of the tenants that he plans to get in that area.
Well, he doesn't have to, but I'm just, you wanted to review it.
Right now, we're still in the preliminary.
My question is, you know, there's areas that we just really need.
Yes.
We need some support facilities to take a little, take a little heat off the infrastructure.
And the whole point of the, you know, of the neighborhood concept and the, you know, that we have, is exactly what Art is saying. You know, all these people here, you got 264 houses, and if, and then you've got the high school, and then obviously it's going to develop out, there's another subdivision. So if there's some kind of a little convenience store there where somebody wants a pack of cigarettes, or some beer, or non-sensible items such as a gallon of milk, or some Advil the next day afterwards, they don't necessarily have to drive six miles.
Right, yes.
And go out there and hit that intersection at 181 and 104, even people who want Gatorade, you know, for football or soccer practice can dash down Higbee Road, and everything's not hitting that intersection all of a sudden. So, you know, when y'all bring this, that would be something that would certainly play well, because, you know, that has a lot to do with the spirit of the current comprehensive plan that we're on.
Yeah, and that's definitely something that we'll look into, to obviously.
Is this the only acreage that's, is this Dick Higbee's piece?
No, this is the Lemons piece.
Who is it?
The Lemons, Debbie.
The Lemons, is this all of the acreage that they own right here in this area?
Yes.
It is? Okay. I was just thinking.
Chairman, can I ask the applicant, I'm unfamiliar with the county's process now. What is their process for this, as far as their approval goes?
I believe we go to a planning commission. I'm a little bit unfamiliar, they have updated the regulations recently, so I am a little bit unfamiliar exactly how that process works as well.
So you would go to their planning commission as well as ours?
Yes, I know we would go to their planning commission as well.
I got two points, I don't know whether they're pertinent or not, but I was the chairman of a condo association in New Orleans back in the eighties, about the same size as this, and we had a clubhouse. And we had terrible problems with parking, because many of the younger people wanted to have parties in the clubhouse, would bring in people from off-site, who would then park in the residents' parking spaces. And I ended up receiving the phone calls when they did that. So you want to continue to think about enough parking around the clubhouse that it can service not just the average day, but when you have events, because you'll find out that they're going to want to do events, and you'll need that money to pay off your various operating expenses. So just think of, and the second thing is, the other problem I had was where to put the dumpster, nobody wanted to look at it. So you want to get it off to the side somewhere. Yeah, there were problems with that. So you want to get that shielded, but you can't shield it so the guy with the truck can't come in with the lifter and get it back out of there.
Right, and those are two things that we'll definitely look at when we start the design of this. Right now, as I said, this is just a conceptual site plan, we hadn't even ordered a survey or anything for this piece of property. So once we, once we get into that, those will be two things that we look into.
This comment's not going to be worth what you're paying for, but, you know, the other thing I would suggest, and I don't know what an activity lawn is, but you're going to lose a lot of your frontage up there when they widen 104, so you might want to rethink how that's going to do in there. I'd like to see some foliage, you know, I don't know, I think it would be nice, but an activity lawn, that's a new term, I just should get something in there. That's it.
Well, we'll take all that into consideration.
Can you explain that to us, that little keyhole looking, kind of upside-down key looking green space?
Our firm actually did not do this conceptual design, that's something that was done by, the developer got done. I don't know if you'd like to come and speak to that.
Robert, we were just asking about that kind of upside-down the key, the green space, just what that was kind of conceptual of.
I'm still not totally understanding what you're saying.
You're talking about all the light green that's in between the trees and all the way down.
The southmost part and the dense center, that green kind of.
Is it going to be like places with a frisbee or a ball, or is it horseshoes?
Yeah, it is. I mean, we're not specific where it's going to be, but it's going to be green space, if that was the question.
Yes, sir.
And we're not, I mean, that's why we're here, is so that, you know, to get your input, because we want to do something that's compatible, but the landscape guy that did this for me is at a Jacksonville, he's a world-class guy. And as we get further into it, you know, we've got to go to the county and deal with that, and I'm sure they're going to have some input. So, you know, we're not, nothing's cast in stone here at this point in time.
The only major negative that I see would be from 104 and maybe Higbee, it looks like all of that, you're looking at a parking lot, parking lots from, except that, you know, roundabout that's in the beginning, but, you know, I mean, it may be a pretty parking lot, I don't know.
Well, you know, a lot of this is the State Highway Department driving the train, and what they're going to require is going to be a lot of what we can do. And something else that you talked about, we've had some discussion with a grocery store, but it's, you know, at this point in time, it's all very preliminary. Well, you know, my family had a lot of discussions about grocery stores here in Fairhope for about 42 years.
I read that, I read that.
About that. But you know, there's some, there's some today that don't require 40,000 square feet like Publix. You know, there's Fresh Market and some of those, and I mean, they're a little more, they're a little more expensive, they are more expensive. Man, I mean, I love those places, and they're in about, you know, I think the one up in Daphne, up by Home Depot is about, I don't know, it's probably, probably not 10,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Maybe 8, 8,500, and they can really be tastefully designed, and, but when you think, it goes back to, think about Highway 181 and 104, and the subdivisions on the west side of 181, south of 104, and then the ones that we're talking about now, you know, who wants to go drive all the way through all that traffic to go back into Fairhope or to Daphne to go to the grocery store when you could, you know, when you've got something that'll accommodate most of your everyday needs? It just, it just seems to make sense, because there's a, there is a good population out there, even as far as Silver Hill, that would probably take advantage of.
That's right.
Something like that. I think you're right, but it's all market-driven with us. I understand. And the other thing, I don't remember who said, so maybe it was Ralph about Highway 104, certainly with, with this design out almost to the, to the edge of the right-of-way at the moment, they're going to have to four-lane 104 eventually one day, and, you know, what you would hope would happen is, if you're on 181 north of 104, they had those, they planted that tree line and saved that right-of-way, knowing that 181 was going to be four-lane, and everything kind of came up to that line, not all the way up to the, to the highway edge. Well, I guess when we get, when we get further into this, and we get talking about turning dirt, I'm sure that Aldot will have specifics. Yeah, and I know they had an 82-ton gorilla in.
This is an example of why I said in the last, when you probably heard me, we need somebody from the MPO or Aldot to come in and say what's going on, because you're making plans, and we need to know how wide, what's this going to be, and when.
I couldn't agree more. I could not agree more.
This is like shooting fish in a barrel.
Yeah. Addressing your parking that you mentioned earlier, we're probably looking at this day in town and other projects, somewhere about three to one in terms of parking. And a lot of that's changed, because the kids have car, everybody's got a car. When I was growing up in Mobile, only the rich guys had cars. Now everybody's got one.
I got a question about the density, and you're talking about apartments, which is a subdivision by definition in one sense, and we've got, and Ken, you might need to help me with this, we've got minimum lot requirements for unzoned properties in our planning jurisdiction with specific setbacks and specific densities for single-family lots. How come something like that doesn't apply to this kind of thing? It's not a subdivision. But by the definition I've seen, but each, but each, each apartment is a subdivision by definition, because it's just, it's your, you're taking a piece of property and you're breaking it up into properties you can sell or lease.
You can't sell them.
But you can lease them.
You can lease them, yes.
And that's the definition of a subdivision.
That's why condominium is not a subdivision.
You're selling them.
I believe it is a subdivision.
Even though they are selling them.
I believe it is a subdivision, we went to that with the county.
I think it is.
A condominium is a subdivision.
In the county?
It's ownership.
In Alabama.
But the def, I'm talking about the definition of a subdivision in state code that prefaces all of this stuff.
Well, the land itself isn't going to be divided for lease. Buildings or units within buildings situated on a piece of land owned by one entity are made available for lease in the apartment complex. An apartment complex itself is not considered a subdivision.
I'm just saying, by definition I read in the state code, any property that's divided for sale or lease is a subdivision.
And I think what Richard's getting at, I think, and basically, if you took the 100-foot lot width and a 15,000-square-foot minimum lot size we have for a single-family, the de facto density is 2.9 acres. That's, that's the most you can get with a traditional subdivision. And are you saying, Richard?
I'm just wondering if that's the same thing should apply or not, because otherwise, why do we have any restrictions on any subdivision in unzoned county?
Mr. Chairman, can I add something to you real quick? This property is unzoned, it is, it is at the edge of our planning jurisdiction. Our authority is very, very limited, there is no zoning authority out there at all. The MOP regulations are in the subdivision regulations, because I believe it complates properties that are leased and sold and so forth. Otherwise, it wouldn't be, I don't believe it'd be allowable to be controlled through the MOP process if it wasn't. And so we have very limited authority, you know, to, on these things. Basically, our review is a ministerial review, are they meeting the regulations of the MOP or not? As far as land use decisions, is it good, is it bad? I mean, that's something that we cannot consider, because it's just not in our, our ability to do that. So I want to make that very, very clear. I will tell you that with, if this was in the city, this location, if this location was in the city, our compatibility analysis, it would not, it would not meet that compatibility analysis.
Do we get any impact fees in this zoning?
No, we don't. It's only inside the corporate limits.
And commissioners, just to give you an example, this falls beyond Fairhope's permit jurisdiction as well. So this would be, so City of Fairhope would not be issuing building permits for this development if it, if it, if it came about. These, I'm guessing, this would probably have to go through the Baldwin County Building Department. I don't believe it's closer.
Or Silver Hill.
Either Baldwin County Building Department or Sil, City of Silver, Silver Hill possibly.
Where's the limit, where's the limit out at 104 then? I thought it went to Fish River.
No, sir.
It's a little jog.
North of Highway 104, it does make a bit of a, it does make a bit of a jog, of a bit of a turn. And then our planning jurisdiction follows Fish River all the way to Highway 104, and then north of 104, it is slightly west of Fish River, if Fish River continued. It's slightly west of there, and, but it's just enough to encompass this piece of property.
And to add further information, District 15, which is a county zoned area, is just north of this.
What's got, Trey?
Just a question, planning commission, you know, this hasn't come up, and I'm very surprised, but y'all have the comprehensive plan, it shows a note of 181 and 104. There's thousands of acres out there that's about to be developed in the next five to six years, and if y'all, this obviously does not meet the comprehensive plan by any means stretch of the imagination. So why hasn't that, I'm just surprised it hasn't been addressed, because if y'all would allow something like this, then everybody else out there is just going to say the hell with comprehensive plan.
Did you hear what Wayne just said? Could you explain that again, Wayne?
Well, here's, we have very limited jurisdiction out there. Now, here's the, and Trey has talked, came to us before and talked about this, you know, can the comprehensive plan be applied outside the corporate limits? And that's a question that we probably need to talk about at some point amongst, amongst our legal, legal representatives. But Trey's right, I mean, this, if this was in the city, this would not be something we would look favorably upon, because the density's 12 units per acre, I don't think we have any, any zoning categories that reach that, except for maybe the Village Center, which is targeted at the, at the Village Centers in the city, which is, I don't think, I think it's 10 units per acre for that as a max. So this would far exceed any density we would have. If you're asking me, you know, this is, this is what I would consider an urban density at 12 units per acre in the middle of a rural area? So if you're asking me if this was going to be a zoning category or a rezoning, we would not recommend that. However, we do have limited authority because it is unzoned.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to tell you what's going to happen, I think everybody can see the writings on the wall. I've been up backwards, my subdivision where it's basically a catwalk, and meeting comprehensive plans, all this stuff, and then you're going to say, well, this guy doesn't, or this used to get, for good person, but anybody could come to do this. I'll just turn around and change, I mean, this doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Either you follow the comprehensive plan or you don't, and that, and that would apply to him or whoever is out there in that area, and I think the city does a big issue.
And Mr. Chairman, if this is an application, we will do that. We will provide that analysis for you as far as the comprehensive plan goes, we certainly will do that. You know, this area is unzoned, there is a process through the county to, this is so far from the city, we, it'd be so far, we couldn't annex it, there'd be no way, without some sort of special legislation, so that probably not going to happen. But there is a process within the county to, to have your district zone if there's concern out there. We did it numerous times with the county, and this is one of the areas that hasn't, has not chosen to have county zoning yet.
Are the schools zoned, and the city limits isn't?
Pardon me?
Isn't St. Michael's in the city limits?
I don't think so.
So, and this is Silver Hill Police Jurisdiction, correct?
You know, I'm not sure, they're a town, so they go out a mile and a half of their police jurisdiction, I'm not sure with that, we haven't looked at that yet.
And Emily can probably correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Fairhope Falls, I think their building inspections are by Silver Hill, if I'm remembering correctly, Emily?
That is correct.
I was going by a special agreement, though.
I was going by special agreement, though, I think, was it?
Hmm, I don't think so, I think that's within their permit jurisdiction.
Hopefully what happens with the new administration coming into county, county commission, that we'll get back on track within the county of getting district zoning reenacted and back up and running. There were three at one point, three commissioners that were so adamantly opposed to it, um, it just, it, it, it just got stuck in the closet, and that was, that was the end of the program, between that and the county's comprehensive plan.
But, Mr. Chairman, you got to keep in mind that, that, you know, as far as the zoning in the county, it is driven by the citizens, that's, it is driven by them, the petition process, and so that's, that's something, I know many, many times, you know, zoning would come up only after a, a development that was not, uh, looked favorably upon by the citizens, that, but, so you got to be a little proactive sometimes if, if that is a concern of you. There's some places they're not concerned about it, and quite frankly, it's probably not a threat, because nothing's, nothing's really, it's not, not a, not an area that's, that's growing, uh, but in areas that, that are growing, it's one of those things that, as a citizen living in the area, you have to think about that, is it, is it worth it to you to go and, you know, go through the zoning process or not, and that's a decision you got to make.
Look at 104, I mean, look at, look at our agendas.
I, I, I agree.
I mean, that thing's going to be, you know, that's going to be Reno Road, you know, Highway 181, you know, in two years, three years, you know, we had discussions, you know, about where to put sidewalks sometimes, and I sound like my dad talking about catching snakes where Bel Air Mall used to be, but, um, but you look at that area out there on 104 and, and, you know, five years from now, and it's just going to be, you know, 10 years, it's going to be just a tough.
Yeah, and probably 30 years ago, Fairhope Avenue and 181 wasn't a note.
Oh, no, no, wow.
So I understand it moves and I'm not, I just.
The problem is, when we, when we wait, then all of a sudden this goes in and the road widens, and then somebody's got to build sidewalks here, retrofit, retrofit, and it's just so nice.
But you know, but you know what, you know what the ticket is, and I mean, the conversation's already being had, is if we get, if the county can get the comprehensive plan back, whether we have to rename it or whatever, and then county and the municipality sit down and start having discussions about everybody being under the, not the same comprehensive plan, but at least working in the same direction, then what we're going to find is we're going to have these areas like 104 and 181 where we'll get a zoning, where, uh, we'll get zoning in place where this type of an issue is not going to be, is not going to be a problem. But it's got to come full circle now, but it's been three administrations since, you know, the, the county commission went the other direction.
But it's still citizen-driven, that process is still citizen-driven.
It is, you're right.
Anything else under older new business?
I don't think so.
I want.
It sounded like the trip was a great trip.
Yeah, I wanted to hear about the trip.
I didn't have a funeral, I had a funeral too that day.
What did y'all, what did y'all bring back that we need to know about?
You know, I, I made a little brief presentation at the director's roundtable before the last council meeting, I wish I would, if, I could do that the next meeting if you want to kind of give a recap, but we, we left and, uh, went over there and we visited, uh, we had Rick Hall, who was, uh, is a consultant we use occasionally for the city, Rick Hall was involved in the initial stages of Seaside, Florida with, uh, as the transportation part of that, and he, he worked closely with the developer and, uh, DPZ, 20 Platters Iber, the original, uh, designer for Seaside, and we looked at several things, uh, um, street widths, pedestrian accessibility, um, things like that, um, I thought it was very good, uh, did a little walking, mini-walking tour of Seaside, and he was showing us various issues there, um, and then we stopped by, Alice Beach had a interesting playground, it was a playground that had, uh, had astroturf, I mean, it was padded, it was kind of, I thought it was kind of neat. Um, and then also we went to, uh, Rosemary Beach, and we met with their town architect and their, um, town manager, uh, both are architects, and they walked us through the process, they basically have a form-based code in, uh, in Rosemary Beach, and they walked us through that process of how that, uh, form-based code works, um, and some of the issues they've had, they've had, you know, parking issues there, and so we had, you know, kind of got some good feedback from them on how they handled certain issues, um, so I thought it was a good trip. Um, I, I, I wrote a little brief paper that I gave everybody before they left on the way over there, and, uh, did we get that to all the planning commission?
Brief?
Yeah, it wasn't brief, was it? You ever die, I did an encyclopedia's brief.
But, but the, the paper, the, and I'd be glad to give it to y'all.
Buford thought it was brief, but.
But basically, what I, what I did is I went through the, and one of the things we want to emphasize too, is I went through the process of, I mean, I worked there for six and a half years and, and very enjoyable experience, but I went through the process of how they became what they are. Um, and basically initially, uh, a lot of the land belonged to Saint Joe Paper Company, our large landowners, landowners, and the state was going to buy a majority of South Walton and take it out of any kind of development potential. That rate, this is back in the eighties, that raised a red flag with, with the county because that's their tax revenue, and also the development community wanted some opportunity to have some ability to provide some, some development there, and so basically the state legislature allocated a million dollars, they had a long-range plan that included just about everything, they had, it was, um, schools, land use, acquisition of state forest property and so forth, and that was called the South Walton Conservation and Development Trust Plan, we called it the Trust Plan. And that sort of, that long-range plan laid out school locations, town centers where , uh, the, um, colleges now, right, right across on the south side of the bridge, where the county offices were, where the health department was, where the high school was, uh, where the library was, all those things was, all those things were laid out in this long-range plan, as well as these little village mixed-use areas along 30A and along 98. And so what you see now is sort of a mix, when you, when you leave Greaton Beach and you drive to Seaside, you're driving to the state forest, that was not by accident, that was by design. Um, they wanted to have these state forest gateways into some of these areas, and it's really kind of neat. So we want to emphasize the importance of long-range planning, um, and then also, um, we went into some of the histories of the particular developments, how they came to be and so forth, so I'd be glad to share that document with y'all, um, and, so you can read it, but, um, but I thought it was a good trip, uh, you know, learned a lot, saw some new things, uh, mixed use in these areas is very important, Rosemary Beach, I mean, and these are resort towns, so, so it's not a complete apples to apples, but you can see things that worked well, some of the traffic calming was, was great, some of the corridors, if you've ever been to Rosemary Beach, and some of the tree-lined corridor are a little bit narrow, the tree canopy makes you feel a little bit compressed, and so you tend to drive a little slower with those areas, uh, like that, and so, um, even the differentiation of, uh, street surfaces can have a, a traffic calming effect, and those were all evident there at, at Rosemary Beach, along with little pocket parks and those kind of things. So we just want to show, give a, you know, show some of the people who went with us that there is a, there are different ways to develop property, and here's how it can be done, so, um, I thought it was enjoyable, and.
I'm glad that y'all are doing that, I think the best way to, to learn is to get outside our bubble and see how other people are using different things, I try to do that with any kind of travel, I try to look at other towns that are comparable in size and growth and figure out how they're implementing infrastructure and, and moving forward in the, a, a safe grow, and growth environment.
Sure.
Really excited that y'all are doing that.
Well, and I, I think it's a, I, I, I would, I would love to do this once a year, um, when I was with Baldwin County, we went on five or six field trips once a year, and we would go just around the county, uh, and we would go look at wetlands, and we had our natural resource planners with us, and they would show us the freshwater wetland and saltwater wetland and why they're important. So as a planning commission member, you're understanding why, when we say these things have a buffer, you're understanding why there's a buffer there, and it helps, I think helps you make better, uh, decisions, more informed decisions, and so if, if y'all would like, we can do it again next year and go somewhere else, uh, within reasonable distance, you know? Um, but one of the things too, that, on, on that paper that I did, I showed, on the very last slide, I had a, I had a plat of, of a place called Villa Tasso, which is in Walton County, and then a plat of Rosemary Beach, they look very similar on their, if you look at the plats, look very similar, but if you were, if you were to ride through Villa Tasso, it was nowhere remotely even close, it's really more of a, of a mix of single-family trailers, manufactured homes, just a hodgepodge, and the difference is, is that Seaside had a very good regulating plan, and Villa Tasso did not, and so just want to show again, long-range planning's important, but also when you do have those plans that are going forward, it needs to be detailed enough to really accomplish what you want to accomplish, and that's working hand-in-hand with the development community, uh, we don't do this in a vacuum, we, we're the regulators basically, and, and so it takes the development community working hand-in-hand with us to make these things a reality. Because, you know, growth's inevitable, um, and I think if we work together, we'll get a much better product rather than, you know, always fighting with the development community, I think they, if you, if you show them the way that, that we desire it to be done in the City of Fairhope, they'll do it, um, and, because they want an easier path to getting their project completed, and so I, I think that, that's something that we want to also emphasize is that, you know, with the visual preference survey, we want to invite all of them to this, to these meetings, so we can kind of work together to sort of determine the destiny and the vision for Fairhope together, I think when you do that, you have, you have much better planning, but also you have, uh, a more a team-type atmosphere trying to get these things accomplished.
You made a good point too about bringing the county in, because, you know, one of my most frustrating things sitting here through the years has always been, all of the growth is outside of the city limits, and the further outside, as we were discussing, the less we can do as far as, you know, we have no zoning outside of the city limits, and that's kind of the.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a great point, and that's something that we faced for years with the county, and I'll, I'll just show you, you know, I'll give you an example, if you go outside of Daphne, um, around Daphne, around 64 and 181, it's District 15, it's in county zoning, and I think that when you look at that compared to other areas that are unzoned, I think that's very obvious that when you do have county zoning abutting a city, it works very well, I think it kind of keeps things, keeps things in balance when the, when the county is working kind of with the city, you know, on the zoning and, and so forth, I think that works very well. Without that, it kind of creates an imbalance, because you as a developer will say, well, I'm going to go, you know, if you, if your motive is just to, you know, do a development, I'm going to go where the least resistance is, and typically when it's unzoned, again, we have very limited authority, um, to do anything, and so you're going to go there and, and do things and, um, you know, and, uh, so I think it, it works very well when you do have the county zoning. If you look at a map, just about all of South Baldwin is zoned, you've got a lot of the eastern shore around Spanish Fort is zoned, around Daphne is zoned, up 225 is zoned, um, even out towards Loxley, that area, I mean, so it's, it's all around, um, it's just, it's just certain pockets that it's not zoned, and one of those areas is, is out towards 104. Montrose, District 16 is in county and has been for years since the early nineties, early nineties, and then Point Clear in the early nineties as well, so, so you got it around you, but again, it's, it's a citizen-driven process, and just by nature, people are more, they're more reactionary, um, when something happens near them, they get concerned, it's very difficult to be proactive and, and to anticipate what may happen near your property that you may not like, so just by its very nature, it's difficult trying to convey that message that if you do want to have a, have a, a voice in how your neighborhood or your area around you is being developed, there is a process for that, but it, it takes something to happen to really get the ball kicked off, and just about every time we saw a, a county-zoned area, it was usually initiated by some event to get people, first of all, to understand